Can afford to cover the whole thing, but I just, so.
But thank you.
Yep.
And then Jean's gonna be gone, but.
So I didn't even put Jean's stuff out there.
That works.
So Rick is on the meeting.
How long is your wife doing, Rick? Wait and see. We don't, uh, hope, hope to. I think, I think she'll know by Friday, but I haven't heard nothing yet. Waiting for some testing to come back and then when they're going to turn the, the bottom attack, so. I think it's probably gonna be pretty quick once we get there, but just kind of waiting right now, so. We've been on business a couple times and everything, so, so that's why. Just waiting on some medical. But they, they, uh, come back, so I think it's, I think all that's now. Mail or whatever, and so that'll be, that'll probably, after that, then they'll get to turn the plan, so.
Yeah. Yes.
I mean, I don't want to be one, so you know, you guys.
No, it's all, don't worry, as big as it. Yeah. I told John, Dawn and me today that, um, she doesn't worry, so, but it's not like it's.
You can't go build this quorum, correct? That's all we need, we don't need all of them.
Right, right, just the forms, yeah.
I fix all of it.
Just sign that.
Just stopping the office before we leave.
Sign those papers, yeah.
Yeah. And remind me, I forgot to sign some notes.
Okay.
All right.
All right, all right.
What we're.
Is Todd here today or not?
Well, he's aware of the.
Is Todd here today?
Yeah, okay. He's aware of the agenda. And he didn't give me anything additional to give you guys.
But he asked.
You got, yeah, and I talked to him, I said, you know, at the last meeting, he said.
I'm here, I watch that, the last meeting.
I'm wondering if I need to call Alice.
Uh, I think she said she was gonna call.
Okay. Normally, yeah, she'll tell me she wants me to call, but I told her she's not. Okay.
Well, it's nine o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Start with a pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, we have approval of agenda, or corrections, additions.
All motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
No, any other approvals or additions? Seeing none, uh, Mark?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
I vote aye also, motion, uh, agenda approved, approval of minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes presented.
I'll second.
Everybody get a chance to look at them, or the, I think I did at home. Any more discussion? Seeing none, Casey?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I'll vote aye also. Okay, Alice, who's up next?
She's got four minutes, I think she's gonna call in.
Call in, okay, we wanna go down to the sheriff, uh, June reviews of, wanna accept the twenty-nine, five ninety-one, twenty-five?
All motion to approve accepting the twenty-nine, five ninety-one, twenty-five, uh, sheriffs, Mercer County sheriffs, revenues.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on it? Seeing none, Mark?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
I'll vote aye also. Hook line and sinker, liquor license.
And everybody got a copy, let me see if you can see it.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Is there no issues in there that I know, is there?
Renewal, I think so.
I just need you to sign stuff before you do it.
Okay. Seeing none, uh, Katie, no.
Jamie.
Jamie.
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Motion carried.
You vote aye too?
I vote aye, well, it's okay. We wanna do.
I'll move to approve the county nurse report.
Okay.
Yeah, and just keep going on.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that one? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I'll vote aye also. All right, what do we got left? What, how long we gotta wait yet? She gone.
Two minutes.
Do you want, do you, do you want me to try to call her?
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess she didn't.
We might as well, so we can connect with her.
Do you wanna try the, do we have any discussion on the out-of-state travel?
I guess we could just start looking at her handout, and then we'd kind of be better prepared for it when she does call or whatever, too. I know I looked over it on the computer and it seemed to read a little better, there, it felt all this black.
I have a few questions for her, whether it's like satellite or wifi or what, because one, for sure Hazen Bay. Wifi is only one spot in service, you get zero, so.
I'll put you on the speaker, you ready? All right. All right. Okay, go ahead, Alice.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning, morning.
Um, so, I sent out that information about the periwether system last week. Um, what I wanna focus on is the Beulah Bay and Hazen Bay areas. Cause that's our most vulnerable locations at the moment. And, and I did speak with Beulah Park Board and Hazen Park Board, and they aren't on board. Um, I know Hazen Park Board said that they would help support it financially, and Beulah was looking at it as well. However, they were wondering, was there any money left in that park fund that they, we could use for part of this?
Well, there is money in there, but I'm not sure if that's locked in. You know, I don't, I don't know if that's the right place at this point, I mean, that's a discussion for the board, as a whole.
Mm-hmm, right.
Alice, my question is, how, is this run by satellite or wifi or?
It's run by wifi, so it has to be connected to internet. Um, and they, both of those locations have internet. And then it is, it is, right, and, um.
And it is only on the hill at the.
It would be like at their, um, campgrounds, their host sites, you know, like the stores and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Um, the nice thing about this is it, what was that?
Nothing, there was a, I don't think anybody said anything, there was a few things I did wanna talk to you about in regards to that through EM, in addition to this periwether thing, so maybe it can all be tied together eventually.
Is there any grant money available with EM for something like this?
Um, there is, but I'm not sure how the grounds would accept that. So I'd have to really call the state and see how, what they feel about that.
I think that's something that needs to really be looked at.
You know, I don't wanna be, I'd rather be proactive rather than reactive in something, you know, especially after, you know, watching what's going on in Texas and things like that with the county officials down there, but, uh, I don't know, it's something that I think we need to definitely look at and wanna do, but I, I don't know if we're ready to approve anything today. I think it's something we need to talk about yet.
Okay, okay, that's no worries. Um, and, well, we have to go through the court anyway, and I think the last email I got from them, we're gonna have to wait for a little while. So, I don't think it's a rush, I just want you guys to start thinking about it.
Yeah, that's where I'm at with it.
And unfortunately, we are on the list for warning sirens and shelters for those areas with the state, but we don't know when or if we're gonna get those.
Yeah, and Alice, this, this, what, the proposal here is, if you make any adjustments to whatnot, like, I, I think we could probably remove that air quality sensor upgrade, that's a thousand bucks a year, there's.
Yeah, we don't need that.
And, you know, that would be something that tweak, but if we were, we could make those, um, we could ta, this isn't a package deal, this could be tailored to exactly what we're looking for, right?
Correct, yes, and we would set up our own policy, so like, um, if the park board and emergency management decide that when a storm is three miles away, we wanna send out the alarm. If the winds pick up to a certain speed, we wanna send out the alarm. Um, so we set up our own policies of when the alert, what alerts would go off. Um, and it also does like a five mile radius around that weather station. So you're gonna get a little bit more warning, cause even the National Weather Service doesn't reach all areas of North Dakota radar, by their radar.
And, and just, cause I don't, I'm gonna ask a dumb question, cause I don't know any better, we currently have nothing like this in place, correct?
Correct, correct, the only thing we have in place is me or dispatch calling up there.
Typically, when dispatch gets it over the teletype, they'll call the campground hosts to warn them of the impending weather.
Yep, and I do too, I warn, I warn all the campground hosts when I notice impending weather.
So if the new warning sirens, would this be something that would be compatible with them?
Well, the new warning sirens would be like what you have in town. Um, this, this would just, um, so once those new warning sirens come, we might be able to even just disregard these periwether systems. And if you wanna look on Stark County website, they have periwether systems in their county, and it'll act, and you can see the widgets on their homepage.
Do they have a siren system there at all?
Yes, they do.
So they use them together, then?
Correct, yes.
That's, I think, was the question, I, I could see where they'd be compatible, that they would work, you know what I mean?
It seems like they should.
Yeah.
Yep, um, the nice thing is, uh, when I talked to Elena from Stark County, when they had those storms come through, they could actually tell where their tornado was actually located, that was coming through Stark County, by those weather systems, which was more, um, current than the National Weather Service radar.
So the total bill we're looking at is ten eight to, to put it in, but we could tweak that a little bit, is what, uh, you and Mark have been saying here, then?
Correct, yes, we can tweak that, absolutely.
Ten eight per year.
Per year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I come up with ten eight for the first year, but like I said, you could back off a thousand bucks off that.
Mm-hmm.
And then year two would be nine thousand, or you could back off a thousand bucks on that, so.
And, and the park boards are on board to help with some of this financially as well.
That was my question, is, is, is this, the Beulah Bay and Hazen Bay, who technically owns them and whose responsibility is it to pay for it?
Well, technically, it's a city, each city's park and rec department own those, so, but, my question, I, I think we could have, be involved in this, Alice, you said you were talking about writing a grant that's gonna cover quite a bit of this?
Yes, I'm hoping to, um, some of my grounds would be able to cover most of it.
And, so I think the county could have a role in help facilitating that, but I think both park districts would be ones that benefit the most from the county doing this, and, uh, you know, they'd have some financial, um, skin in the game on this. So I, I think.
My question is, is can the county even pay for it because it's city-owned?
Well, it, it would be our weather station, so we would, we're gonna be able to control it, the, the dispatch, myself. Um, and the best thing is, is not even help the campgrounds, but anybody that might be up in that area, Mercer County. We could get the, you know, we will get that weather to them.
And I don't disagree with that, and I don't wanna make it sound like it's a city don't pay for it, but there's.
You know, like.
We don't own it.
Answer your question, my, my, my thoughts on it are, it's city-owned or whatever, but ultimately, the emergency management side of it's gonna land on us first. So, I mean, we do have some skin in the game.
We do, but it just.
I look at it more as the county owns the system, and the park boards are contributing to it.
As, yeah, as long as it's not a full one hundred percent county paid.
You know, I'm just gonna throw, throw numbers out here, rather than, you know, an actual number, but let's say every camper, they, they're charging a fee or something. Let's say they up their fee by one dollar or something, it contributes to the emergency management system, you know?
Alice, how long, th- this grant that you applied for, um, when do you, oh, when do you, when would you expect to hear back on that? And is it contingent upon actually buying the service first before you can apply for the grant, or can you apply for the grant before you buy the service?
Well, what I'm thinking is some of my grants that, um, I already have might cover this, and I do have some room in there. Um, being down here this week, learning about FEMA and the future of FEMA, I'm a little concerned of any new grants coming aboard, but, um, I was going to look into, talk to the state of what my current grants, if that would help cover some of this. And just so that, what Rick said, um, Hazen Park Board already said, you know, maybe we charge two dollars extra a day per camper to help pay for a part of the system.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd be incli- inclined to, uh, support this and move forward with it, but I think before I would want to do that, I'd like to know the funding mechanism first, and who, who's gonna pay what, and where the, how it gets divvied out, and, and, uh, and separated that way before, and I think.
And if there is any grants that can pay for it.
Correct.
So Alice, uh, looking forward then, um, to, uh, facilitate this forward, do you wanna look at it next meeting, or do you wanna? I mean, we can put something together and, and we got like three weeks, but do you wanna put something together so we can look at it and get it back on the agenda, or do you wanna wait longer, or what are you thinking?
Um, I would, I would try to get on the next agenda, and what I'll do is I'll try to connect with Dan and Sonia from each park board, and see if we can get a confirmed commitment from them, and then maybe all three of us could come in front of you. And then I'll know more about my grant money, too.
Maybe just reach out to Carmen if you wanted added.
Yep, okay.
Or when you want it added.
Yeah, and then we can, you know, we can build, build something off this and keep moving on it, but, uh, I mean, we, we're, we're in the, I think we're in agreement, but we would like to do something, but we're not sure how yet, so, um, let's just keep putting it together, and put one foot in front of the other, and let's see if we can look at something again on, on the sixth, I believe it is, of August.
Yep.
All right, that sounds great, I can certainly do that.
Okay, thanks, Alice.
Alice, Alice, what we got, you said you wanna cover the out-of-state travel stuff, too?
Oh, the out-of-state travel, what was that about?
Well, I think we had asked, we had asked Meta to come back.
Oh, okay.
So I don't even know that.
I, the thing with the out-of-state travel was, you know, where, I had asked you about.
Oh, yes.
You know, how it was actually supposed to work, because we, we didn't follow policy last meeting, or a couple meetings ago, whatever it was. But I did speak with Meta on it yesterday, and she's not gonna be here today, she had other commitments, and, uh, there should be like, you know, an agenda, and some other, uh, you know, travel expenses, things that are put together as a plan going forward, so we know rather than, you know, what it's supposed to look like, so.
Okay.
I will get some more of that together, and I'll get that to Carmen.
There was some budget questions with her travel also, so she's actually on the next agenda.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, we can, we can cover that there.
Okay, so that'll be on August sixth also.
Thanks, Alice.
Thank you, have a great week.
You too.
Okay, is Todd available? I wonder, we got a call in the back, there he is. I don't know if anybody that's entertained, if you haven't, we ask you to sign up here. See you later. Yep.
I guess we talked about it, so I cover what she said she's on the next.
Okay, Todd, you're, when you're ready, we'll start.
I'm ready.
Okay, well, what do you, what do you think?
They drafted up the, uh, coal company has drafted up easements, they look legal and proper for us. So we're right at the point, um, we just need to know who's paying what for the easement, so I haven't got that number yet, that's the last thing we need to do, we can move forward.
I guess looking over the agreement, we're, we're the ones that'll be buying the easements, or paying for it, and the number, I guess, is coming from Casey at this point. Uh, if you are prepared for a number, or?
Not today.
Do we have, uh, if we're not gonna do it, do you have any plan on when you, can we have it ready by next meeting, or by the special meeting, or?
I would, by the end of the week, but, um, I have some complications, like, um, numbers that.
Okay. So, we're looking at.
We ha, I, I didn't know if we could look at a special, since there's five Wednesdays in the month, so we've got a whole extra week. We have a special budget hearing next Friday, I didn't know if we could put it on the agenda.
Could we incorporate it in there?
If we can do a separate meeting, if Casey feel you could be ready by next Friday? Or if you would prefer to wait till, I think it's August sixth?
So what I'm trying to do is get together some of my numbers on legal fees, and much like the county, their system has changed, so they're having to go back to the old system and all the rules, to try and gather some of their numbers.
So what, what are the legal fees for?
So like, I, oh, I guess I was in here last time.
Yeah.
Um, so, in the beginning, which was like nine and a half years ago, um, the representatives from North American Coal were telling the county that this was not prescribed through, it was undocumented, trivial, and protection, and it didn't need to be replaced, so I had a legal representation to try and protect the property and to protect the public, so that it needed to be protected. So I heard talks that should not have even occurred, if we'd all been on the same page and had an agreement at the beginning.
Okay, my, my question is, is, how does that affect the, the easement, cause?
That's the one way I have to do it, so, so, but I've heard about the mining holes in the road.
The intention is to put the road back where it was.
No, I get, I get that, but I mean.
But the road, I'll explain now.
How can you val, but what I'm saying is, how, how, how does that fa- factor into the value of the easement, I mean, typically?
Here's how it does, is that, that was a road that was put through. The landowners were never compensated for it, it became a county road. The county recognized it when the mining activity took place, and essentially, an inverse condemnation. By that, I mean it's being done backwards. Could've went out and bought the easement back way before, and then we wouldn't have this problem, but that never occurred.
By our county board department, that is, it, it, it's not a mine issue, this is a county issue that they did not do.
Right.
No, I get that, but I'm just.
But under eminent domain, um, part of the just compensation also is attorney's fees and costs, is what the landowners do.
Why is this an eminent domain, normal, cause, but I'm, what I guess what I'm saying is, is typically an easement, you can get an appraisal for it on the value of the land prior to what it is, and.
Attorney's fees are on top of that. And what Casey's looking at doing is just relooking at expenses, which would save the county, and the reason it's inverse condemnation is because we acted as a county, what, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy years ago, by going in and taking the land, which is an, which is an eminent domain condemnation procedure, process, that was never reimbursed.
Okay.
So.
Todd, I'm slightly surprised by your terms today, cause they were not mentioned last meeting.
Uh, pardon us, because I picked up more information.
Okay, I just, that was a, I'm not disagreeing that Casey didn't lose nine acres of land.
Right.
I'm agreeing that the mine wants to put the road back where it was, I think Casey and the individuals that use it would like the road back. Correct, the ones that I have talked to want it back, do I think that you should get something for your nine acres? Yes, do we sign easements all the time on our land, right, wrong, or indifferent, with or without money? Yep, but I think we do need a dollar amount.
Right.
But I don't think that we should.
I think, too, it's like we're gonna set a precedence on how we do things here, too, you know?
This precedent of reimbursing for the legal fees?
Correct.
You know, so I mean, it's.
That, that, that precedent's already been set.
Okay.
It's already been set.
But I'm just saying, you know, like.
But where, where was that set, because when has the county paid out for legal fees?
Nationwide they've had to do that, like, do you have an domain?
These are questions I have for you, because they weren't discussed last meeting.
Right, right.
And I don't necessarily.
So, question is, cause the road crosses over into.
State.
State land.
So we have to pay the state also what we?
And I watched the last county, or I last, watched the last county commission meeting, and just did a little, I don't think a prescriptive easement works for publicly owned land. In Nor, in, not in North Dakota, under the century code, it doesn't. For private landowners, not for. Well, I'm just, I'm gonna say, I got, I got century code here, so my, my question is.
They don't have to go that far into the weeds, very simply, the school, state of mark, close consent that they want the road back to.
Right, but we have to pay them just compensation with whatever it paid the other, so I mean, the, the entire right of way is gonna be compensated. is gonna be compensated the same. And so that's, that's the sticky wicket here.
See, with an inverse condemnation, um, it, it's the same as a regular con- condemnation proceeding in regular eminent domain. Except it didn't start off, the predecessors of interest in the county did not go through and buy that easement. They just took it.
No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that, that, I, I believe you.
Right.
We gotta be fair because we're correcting some mistakes for the past here. Just as a, as an elected official, I, you know, I wanna look out for, protect Casey on this and, and not, uh, you know, not look like he's getting a sweetheart deal at the expense of the taxpayer, but also wanna look out and, and, uh, and, uh, make sure my, the rest of my colleagues on the, on the commission here are, that we're legally protected, that we're not setting something that sta- establishes the next private landowner coming in and holding, holding us to what was here, so I, I-
I've told them, I, I wish that they had made sure the easements were signed, but the way the agreement is, it didn't really matter if the easements were signed because it's the county's responsibility, and the county didn't do it.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I can't-
And now it makes me question how many others are out there that, that county didn't get.
Well, leading to that too is the fact that, you know, we, we get an easement on this road from, to the south of your house. What about the rest of the, there's no easement on the road from County twenty-five down to the connecting of this road? Are we, I mean, we're looking at the stuff across the, to the, to the south and west of your place. What about the rest of the road? Are we, do we gotta get an easement on that also?
A majority of that's on the section line.
No, it's in the middle of it.
No.
None of it is.
Maybe I'm not understanding which one.
You know, when we, we left the mine site, we crossed, I'm gonna say the highway, it's pavement. We jumped onto Casey's land at that point, I believe. Okay, that road winds all the way down until we went around the hill. And the piece we're talking about today is the connecting piece up on top on the south of his home. The connecting road between in between, we, we don't have anything there either.
I'm under the assumption the easement this proposed is covering all of that.
No, all we're, all we're talking about is that, there's nine point some acres up that is covering on the, up on that.
To put the pre-existing road back.
It'd be more than nine point some acres.
So just the portion that was-
Taken out.
Taken out is covered. Wow, boy, that makes it even-
I, I mean-
All we gotta worry about right now is what was taken out. And, and things that were not disturbed, they're there by easement, by prescription because they've been there so long. What triggers this is that that road had to be removed. You know, it, it, it's all kind of under the same body of law when we have fences. Let's say you put your fence up two foot on a neighbor's property, so you're taking up two foot of the neighbor's property you didn't have. If everybody uses that and works and agrees that it is the property line, after twenty years, under the doctrine, doctrine of acquiescence, which is the same equitable law we're dealing with with eminent domain, whether it's traditional or inverse. That becomes the property line. So those roads that have not been disturbed, that everybody's accepted, the county's been pros- you know, maintaining them and taking care of them all this time, that's now the road.
Hey, Todd, is it correct with a prescriptive easement though? We'd have to take Casey to court to get it. And I'm telling you, as a county commissioner right here, I have absolutely no appetite to take Casey to court to get a prescriptive easement.
Well, that's not where we're at, because Casey's willing to let the easement go.
Well, I understand, but you keep talking about, the prescriptive easement applies to that portion of the road, but-
Okay, but the portion of the road that's not covered by the easement, that road is still there. It was never taken out.
No, I, I'm just saying it'd be a shame for knowing that this got litigated ten, ten years ago, whatever. To keep this road in place, I'm sure as heck not as a county going back to, to litigate, to put the road back in place. Because at the time it was argued to keep the road in place and all the way to the, I don't know, district court up, going up. I, I'm just, I have absolutely no appetite as a county commissioner to take a landowner to court to get an easement that wants, wants the road to be put back. I, I just think-
Open up, and this is not, I, I think you're putting the cart and the horse in two different barns. The, the road that was already there that hasn't been discussed by the mine, that's not what we're talking about here today. That road has been there. The only time we have to worry about that is if that road's ever gonna get taken out or modified. The road that we're talking about now on the Casey's property, that was there. The coal mine had a duty and the county accepted that, yeah, we will re-accept that as part of our county road system. So the mine had a duty to put it in. Previous people who are no longer with the mining company tried to hose Casey and his family by saying, no, that was a trail. It's not a road and we're not putting it back.
I don't-
So at that point, somebody had to bring the coal mine to get up to do what they were supposed to do. Casey stepped in, did that as the landowner.
No, I, I mean, I, I don't think that'll-
And back then, the county should've stepped in.
But they didn't. And so what, what I'm saying is, we're, we're here where we're at today and-
Because the county didn't do their portion.
Right, and if-
Well, you gotta look at the bigger picture and the whole thing here now. I mean, I granted, today we're talking about the piece, the nine point two acres. Okay, we negotiate that, and we're successful, we get this and we got it in place and we know where we're going, okay? But now we don't have, we don't have a connecting, why do we need to negotiate and put a road back if we don't put anything connecting other than we need to get an agreement with Casey for some type of a connection? To me, it's all together.
It is all together, because that's the only connecting piece to the other side.
The other roads are already there, but we're doing-
They're there, but we, we, we can't-
But they're there, but we don't have an easement on it.
We can't, no, we, we don't-
They've been there long enough to-
Do you, are you gonna have an issue with putting some type of, I should ask you, what, what, what's your feeling on the road going into the connecting this?
I guess that's a separate issue because that road hasn't been moved, so-
I get that.
I'm understanding, I cannot close that.
Okay.
So I don't have any authority to take the road out.
Alright, so now, then we, we're on record with that, and let's, um, let's work on this piece on top of the hill.
I guess my could, my recommendation would be that the county request the mine to negotiate something.
But that's not how the agreement is written, unfortunately.
What the previous commission requested three years ago.
Well, but, but, but hold on, why, why would?
This is a county road, right?
Undocumented.
No, I, I under- I know, I understand that, but, um, to me, this is-
The agreement that was signed is that the county gets the right of way.
Correct.
So it's, the mine is putting the road back, but it's not the mine's responsibility to pay for the easement.
Yeah, it's signed by the prev- previous commission.
It's signed by the previous commission and the previous state's attorney approval.
Well, and that's, that, that's the part that-
Not this state's attorney.
I said the previous state's attorney.
But what, you know, I ask him-
I wouldn't went into this mess.
But asking-
I'm specialized.
But Todd, I'm just ask, asking Casey, you know, what he would like to see, but I, legally, I don't think there's any standing for that.
For what?
The mine to pay for.
The mine to pay for.
No, there's no standing for the mine to pay for. No.
The mine is willing to put it back.
Back when the mine was walking and saying, no, we're not gonna rebuild that road. The county should've stepped in and taken the mine to court like Casey did. So Casey's attorneys, they did what our attorneys should have done. We should have initiated that.
Was it ever said that they wouldn't put the road back where it was supposed to be?
Yes, as previous land managers told Casey.
I just, I just agree with that, I guess based off the documents I've seen and-
Prior to that resolution being written, that was Sarah Flock's testimony, is it's a trail, it's not a road.
I mean, he has been stated it was undocumented, so-
I get that portion of it, but tha- that's been litigated and all the way, so, I mean-
So clarification with litigation, it went to a district court, but North American's attorney at that time, I believe, was Brian Vialla. He got up at the beginning of the proceedings and said, this is the wrong venue, and it was never, so, yeah, there was a court date.
What do you, what do you mean it was, I'm pretty sure that was, I'm confused now.
Yeah.
Then the, I'm, if I remember right, this went all the way to the Supreme Court.
It did.
No.
No?
There was a prescriptive easement case that I was involved in in McKenzie County, but Supreme Court multiple times.
But that's not this case.
That's not this case, but the law that we are able to rely on is from that. I'm so confused.
So but boils down to it was, we need a, we need a dollar figure from, from you. And we, we're in agreement, the road should go back where it is, that, that's the consensus we have of here.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just don't, like I said, I don't want it, you know?
But the mine is not, it's the county having to pay.
There is a road built, partially built, sixty percent more than what the percentage is that's built.
It's temporary.
And I'm not gonna-
There, there's a start of permanent road that was being built last summer.
Okay.
And it might be cheaper for the mining company to just secure easement for that without having to deconstruct that road to reconstruct the next road. Cause there was one landowner that did say that they did not like the road not being on a high point, so.
Well-
Another thing that complicates this issue is the topography that changed in the mining process. So the road used to run relatively straight and it was on a high point of the land. Now, the contour of land changed, the topography moved the high point of that area to the north of two hundred yards or something, and now that's changed.
But Casey, back in March, I think Rick and state's attorney did-
I didn't go on the boots on the ground, but I went the other day.
But, no, I'm just saying, didn't you, I thought your plan was to go out and get an agreement where everybody in-
I was in agreement with that, but not all the main persons were.
But you're the landowner.
But you're the landowner.
And the ones that I've talked to, they just want it back. They don't really care where it's at. They liked where it was at before because of the flatness of it, but they didn't-
And, and back to the beginning of this, when we went out on the land, um, from a legal standpoint, it's going across your land, putting a road back that had went across your land was removed during the mining process is now being put on. And, and I made the comment out there that if Casey's happy where that road is replaced on his land, I'm tickled. No more need to discuss. So some neighbor down south or north, well, I wanna make a curve to the right, once and I wanna go to the left, don't care. It's Casey's land. That's all we need to go on.
I just, back to your point, Casey, of this temporary, I honestly don't care if the mine started building the road and now they're gonna put it back to where it originally was. And I don't think the mine cares either. We just, they, everybody wants the easement sign, but we need a dollar amount of what you want for the easement.
And where the road's gonna go.
We just use that for hefty money.
Well, but I think if we don't get-
We're back to where we were last two weeks ago.
We, we're running the risk here, right, we're running the risk here of, I mean, if we don't get this number and get these easements,
Then there's no road.
There's gonna be no road, and I don't think anybody wants that. And that's, I mean, that's just the gist of it, right?
The road has to go back in for them to get the certificate of reclamation.
But if there's no easement sign, they can't put it back.
Have, did you confirm that with the PSC? Cause I doubt, this has no G- PSC jurisdiction on this. I think they can just, honestly, I think all they have to do is reclaim the land. I don't think they have to-
If you can't get the easement, how are you supposed to put the road back?
Correct.
Well, let's back up a little bit, no. Yesterday we went, I'm, I'm not gonna speak for the mine, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Jeremy or whatever to, uh, but talking with Tyler yesterday, there's gonna be five foot of subsail and topsail put back on this road. The topography's gonna go up. The mine is gonna go over that ridge, that road that started there. They're gonna remove that. So we're gonna be, the topography's gonna look like, the old road's gonna be on the, it's gonna look like it did, basically.
But better.
You know, you know, it's gonna be hot, the highest point. That, you know, obviously from when you're looking at it right now, we're, we're looking at, uh, subsail, I mean, the, um, help me with, uh-
Subsail.
Not the subsails, below it, the, the main, overburden grade. That's what we're looking at. Okay, so we're putting it up here and we remove this, the whole picture, I mean, the, the main road's gonna be, it's not gonna look like it does today. That is what, I mean, if we have it on record that they're gonna make it look like that, that's, I'm satisfied with that, as long as you are. And we put the road back where it is, where it was, I mean.
Basically, I think everybody wants the road, right?
Yeah.
Right? We're just basically down to compensation on that, so let's, let's-
And there, I mean, there is a going rate though for easements in the-
Correct.
I mean, and-
Correct. Not only the dollar figure, but we get, let's, I'd like to get locked in, we, this road's been moving around. Let's, let's put it where we think it's gonna be. And that's gonna be it, and then we'll decide, you know, and I think you're, it's your land, and if, let's, let's lock it in and get it done, you know?
And I'm-
And then you give us a figure and, and let's-
And again, from the county's standpoint, I wanna, I wanna find something that protects Casey so that it doesn't, it doesn't show that we're given as a, the county preferential treatment to them. I wanted something that protects us up here so that future disputes or whatever that comes across, I'm guessing there's more county roads in this county that probably don't have easements. So whatever we do here is, we're gonna correct a-
And the mine just wants to finish their job, so I mean-
But we're gonna correct the wrong here, and I just think the longer we sit on dead center here, we run the risk of, nobody's gonna be happy because there's gonna be no road. And, uh, I don't think that's an acceptable answer, and-
And then the question is, is how do we get from this point to giving these guys the go?
Okay, where, where do you, the question is, where do you want the road? Simple as that. If it's, if it's brought up to topography, put it back where it is, where it was, are you happy with that? It's your land.
The easement that's is drafted is what we've discussed, and what, that's the product of all of those discussions.
Yeah, we, we've got three options. We, when you guys went out there and you chose option one-
We got a definite one now.
Okay, and if the topography fits-
But did Casey agree to that? Because we were all under the impression last meeting and then it's not, so, I mean, Casey, is that, are you in agreeance of where that easement is written for?
That was what I-
Which is where the original road was at, correct?
Correct. The way the topography was explained to me was slightly different than it was a couple, than it is. A couple months ago, the description was slightly different than what was described to Rick yesterday. So that was all that good. I had talked to most of the people that are on this resolution. So I think we probably do have to give them some weight, Todd, if their names are on this resolution.
But like you said before, it's an access trail for them.
And said that for winter access and maintenance for the county, cause then we're gonna need all of this, and there's gonna be more maintenance to the road. Then maybe it would be better to be on high point, so that's different.
Mine-
Back to Mark's point about how the mine shouldn't be held accountable for this, I think is wrong. Because prescribed roads, as Todd has explained, have no issues. The landowner wants to close those roads, he's been wrong, and he has to come to the county to close the road. The mine came and asked the county to close the road, take the road out, so why should the county incur expenses at the mine's benefit? Why should the rest of the residents in Mercer County have an expense that goes back to our taxpayers that is incurred by mining operations?
Casey, unfortunately, I, I know what my state's attorney's telling me on prescribed road and all that stuff. I think that needs to be legally defined and un- unfortunately- I know what my State's Attorney's telling me on prescribed road and all that stuff, I think that needs to be legally defined and unfortunately, you can. No, because there has to be an adverse impact for a prescription to, to, it has to be, somebody has to be adversely impacted. And so when I've looked at this, how do you value this easement, and the truth be told, two of the three methods, the value of the easement, you should just sign the document and no compensation given because it's just putting a road back that was already there. So there's, cause there's no adverse impact of putting this back in there, and so I disagreed to get the true definition and to get this thing, to get this thing declared a prescribed road, you're gonna have to go to court.
And, and you're, and what you just said too, it's like, I'm in agreement with that, but to the fact is, oh, there's one part, portion of that that we didn't add to what you just said, we are sitting with an agreement that's previous commission signed and we're stuck with it, you know, that, and that's the whole thing, this, this is a.
Eric, you're absolutely right, had that agreement not been forward by a previous commission on their previous administration, it would be.
There is one simple sentence in there that makes the county liable for this. I, I, whether I disagree, agree or disagree on it, there is one line in that agreement that was signed that makes this the county's responsibility.
You know, and I agree with what you're saying that, you know, if you and I and the, the five of us up here going forward are looking at another one, definitely gonna look at it different than what we, but we're stuck with something that happened ten years ago, or twelve years ago, or whatever it was, but the bottom line is, is that there's an agreement signed and he's saying that we have to follow that agreement. I'm, I'm inclined that we have to follow the agreement, I mean, that's, and the bottom line now is two things are involved. Where do you want the road, and how much you wanna get, you know, for this amount, and I guess, I'd have a problem paying for legal fees, I just wanna know. As taxpayers, all I want is a dollar figure, you know, how much is it, you know?
So you don't want, you don't wanna know any justification of the dollar figure?
Well, you do need to some justification, but the bottom line is, is the fact of it, if it's a legal matter.
But whatever you come up with, Casey, we gotta turn around and pay the state the same amount.
But we also have to agree to it and it can't be an absurd amount when there's a going rate for easements.
We get to the point that we can't justify it, we can't, we're not gonna put a road in, that's what the bottom line do, I mean.
And none of us want that.
You know, I, again.
Now we have to do with more, I think we.
So before the state gets involved, we gotta figure out, this is where this is going.
Right.
And without the easement signed.
And that's, but that's where I'm saying that we run the risk here during this, during this all any longer and there's just gonna be no road, and I don't think anybody wants that.
But I think the resolution says that they have to.
But the resolution is that they also have to get the easement to put the road back.
The county has to get the easement.
And if the county, if the county can't get the easement, there's not, gonna be no road.
Right.
So you, I mean, we'll give you time to get the, the money, but I, I'd like to know, it's like, where do you want the road? My opinion, I mean, it's.
Oh, it is, it was a couple more of those people on that list who confirmed that their wishes probably can't be followed, but it'll be okay if we just put it back where it was previously, just not on the highest point of the land, so it's not exactly the same as it was.
And it sound, it sounded like they were gonna put a culvert in and Elroy had no issues with snow removal, maintenance, any of that, if it was back where it was supposed to be, correct, Rick?
Right, that's what Elroy's take was, if, if the, if the topography, if that old road, I mean, the road that they constructed and started, okay, if that's removed, and that's brought down.
That won't be the highest.
That, and the road, the subsail?
I think it was in January when I was out there.
Or March or whatever, when Todd was there.
We were estimating at that time, there was seven foot of elevation change. So then it's how much we would build the road up. Um, discussion at that time was, how high do you wanna make the road? Because the higher you make the road, the more maintenance, the more happens. Where, are you better off with a lower road that's below the high point, or better off building up a higher one?
But that high point won't be there, correct?
Can, can I ask Jer- Jeremy, what, explain about how we, what you explained to me?
Yeah, so, so that, that portion, that portion that was built on the ridge that built on the subsail, that'll be removed. So there'll be a little elevation drop coming down to the, to the original alignment that was agreed upon. But when we met out there in March, Elroy's take, Todd's take was, there's gonna be no issue with snow removal. Elroy had no concerns, either looking at both roads there, there was gonna be no, no issues with snow removal on either one.
So the road to the north, once we put the subsail, you put the subsail back in and build the road, what's the elevation of the road gonna look like to the, what, the area to the north?
It's, there'll be a little difference, it, the, the hilltop will be slightly higher, but it's so far back from it. You know, that area is really flat, as we saw when we were out there and looking at the topo, it's really flat, so, you know, the, the idea is, I don't know if it'll be three feet, I, I can't really say the difference from that hilltop, two hundred yards north, it's, I mean, relatively speaking, it's gonna be flat there, so, so the snow is not gonna be an issue. No more so than if it was built in that second option.
Casey, for you and your family and all those using it, I just want the road back so that you guys can use it, nobody has to spend twelve miles going around, none of us wanna do that. I can speak that, I, I just want you to give us what you need, as long as it's realistic to do. But it is the county's responsibility.
Yeah, and, I mean, if it, come up with a fair number and we'll get it, get it done and, you know, you know, I think if it goes, i- if you want, Casey, I mean, county could hire an appraisal to get that appraisal for the, for what the right of way is worth, if you want.
I've been offered these things by other companies, I mean, I just wanna figure that.
Wait, I think Derek was gonna check on some other numbers as well.
So I'm, and I'm saying that, you know, and it's.
Right now, my name is old justice, the legal state, I just do not know the actual cost. And I did incur that because of the money stamps, the staff was betrayed.
Todd, how is that, I, I'm sorry you had to incur that, but how is that the county's responsibility to have to pay back?
I.
When the agreement states.
It's a way to measure it because back when the predecessors were involved, they were not going to do anything with that road, they were gonna take it out and forget it, remove it permanently.
Isn't, isn't the agreement written to put the road back?
So if the county should have been in there doing what Casey's attorneys were doing to make sure that whoever ended up doing the reclamation put the road in.
But isn't that how the agreement is written, that the road will go back to where it was, so how is the, how is the mine saying they're not putting it back? How's the county saying they're not putting it back?
It was about four months that went up to this.
The coal mine was saying, no, we're not going to do that, which is, and Derek representative was saying it's a trail, and we'll go to court to say that it's a trail and therefore not subject to reclamation. If it was just a trail, they had a legal drought.
I, I don't.
Didn't, didn't we say this was an undocumented road to start with?
Yeah, I'm.
I wasn't there, I guess, but if there would be a trail there, I, I don't think the argument back at the time would have been that it wasn't gonna get put back. Cause if we have a trail going to somebody's yard and they wanna trail put back in there, we're gonna put it in whether it's county or not. So I don't know, I wasn't there at the time, but I think the argument was, was it a county road?
Correct.
At the time.
And that, and it was determined to be.
Undocumented.
Right, right. Unbacked. And so now the argument was made that it was a county road, and now we're trying to do what's right and get all the paperwork in line to.
Make it a county road.
I, I, I just, I'm pretty sure there's probably, if this, if this road existed without, uh, proper paperwork in place, there's probably others in the county and.
But those aren't gonna be affected.
No, no, but I, I, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, what I'm saying, this could come up again, I don't want to be viewed as giving a fellow, I, I know he stepped down on this, but he's a fellow commissioner, I don't wanna be viewed as us giving him a sweetheart deal and the next person doesn't get that.
Renewal you a hundred percent.
Um, so I'm trying to, trying to balance it out to where, not yet, but protect Casey's interest, protect the rest of the commission's interest, and it sounds to me like everybody wants the road back in the place, so, um, and it comes down to just compensation, no.
But I'll disagree and have.
It needs to be, in my opinion, that compensation needs to be close to fair market value of some, some sort, because anything other than fair market value, and I think we open ourselves up to a lot of problems.
Well, I agree.
Well, you know, and the bottom line is boiled down to two things, one, where do you want the road, and let's put it there. Second, how much you want, and you're not ready to do that. So, I mean, the next day, when, when can we be ready to do that, what do you, what do you think?
I hope that I get this dollar figure to you later.
Should we just put it on the August sixth meeting?
So, can we, can we, if we can put it on that special meeting next week, would you be willing to work with that, try to do that?
I would try, but I can't get it.
Well, that's fine, and if we can't, then we'll move it to the sixth, but let's get something in place so we can, we got something we can move forward with.
Back in January, Todd talked to me, we should just get together as a committee and discuss.
No, no.
He just told me to.
We were getting together, but can't be involved unless the full commission.
You and I are supposed to get a, you know, have a conference, that's why I've talked to you a couple times about it, but like he asked me as a portfolio holder to, you know. Yeah, we can have Elroy involved, but, but the bottom line is, is that where do you want the road, and the other thing is, how much do you want, and that, that's negotiable, you know, I mean, it's, the end of the day, we're gonna have to work at that, figure that out, right? Simple as that.
And Casey, you know, you, you just said where the settlement is at, and I don't, you know, I, again, I wanna look out for your interests too, I don't think there's a settlement necessarily involved in this. I mean, this isn't a, it's not a legal proceeding, I think that, we have a legal document, and, uh, again, I'm just gonna encour, I'm gonna, I'm gonna encourage you to go back and find a fair, a fair market value for this easement and come back with it because, um.
Well, with all legal documents, when all parties involved agree to change those legal documents, we have to change those things back. So it would be more economical to come up with consideration that the landowner would get compensated and it would be cheaper for the money and it would be zero headache for the county, because everybody would be in agreements and we wouldn't have to hash off this publicly.
Uh, well, but where's, but where's the agreement at, I, the, you said that there's a mutual agreement here and I don't.
Yeah, you can come up with a mutual agreement, the county doesn't have to deal with this publicly.
If the county's ready to check, we gotta deal with it publicly.
Yes, we have to deal with it publicly.
But if it's cheaper for the mine to settle with the landowners without involving the county, as the document as presented can go through as presented.
But where's the basis for you asserting that, cause, I mean, if we just get the easement, I know, but I'll go, if, let's say, let's say the easement is fifteen hundred bucks an acre is what it is, and nine point two acres, whatever, I mean, how is it gonna be any cheaper than just getting the easement and putting the road back? Well, no, but I'm just saying, that's probably what fair market value is gonna come back at. Somewhere between, I'm guessing, a thousand and two thousand dollars is what value the easement is. You know, there's a lot of, with this, and I've done a lot of, since the last meeting, I watched it and just, I wondered, you know, how do you value an easement? And I went through and there's different methods to do it, and like I said, two of them would, could argue, Casey, that it's not worth anything and, and you shouldn't be compensated for it because it was an existing road. And, um, I'm trying to find something fair for you, and because we're also correcting something from the past, sixty years ago, when there was no easement done on this, or whatever. I believe there's a value of that, to that, for you, and so, uh, trying to be fair to you, um.
Without just saying there's no road.
Yeah, but, and I just think we're running the risk here of nobody being happy, and there's gonna be no road.
Well, that's what I mean, I've said that earlier, we're not gonna look at it like this again, you know, but today, today, we're, we're caught between a rock and a hard spot and, and, uh, not through what we're doing, but it's like we have to move forward one way or another. And I, you know, we can't, you know, keep coming back and doing this over and over, we're gonna have to decide, you know, we'll have to negotiate a price with you, and we, you're gonna have to decide where you want the road.
But it can't break the county either, I mean, we, we have.
Well, the bottom line is, if we, that's part of the negotiation. If it gets to that point where we can't afford it, we can't put the road back, we won't get an easement.
Right.
That comes with the negotiations.
I think we can all agree that it was done not correctly, but.
Alright, so let's get the price and then we move to that.
Do you have an idea where you want the road, are you gonna set, decide?
I had said back in January that I would like it where it was.
Okay.
That's what I discussed with Tyler.
And since then, I have talked to other people that are on that resolution, and I think being their names are on that resolution, they should have submitted what their holders are not.
Cause I, you know, I think, I mean, looking at it yesterday, you know, where that haul road crosses there, there's gonna be a low spot, you're gonna have more issues with snow there than you're ever gonna have up on that hill, you know?
Well, the haul road will be raised back up when we take it out.
Yeah, so I mean, that's a, even when you, when you look at it that kind of, the whole, the whole elevation's gonna come up again.
Close.
Cause we're at Robergen elevation, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Technically, that was close to the section line and that was a high point at the previous to mine. So how much that topography changes, I don't know, but it should be at least as high as going west, if not higher.
I don't know where the, I'm, I'm not following.
So there won't be a low spot where that haul road is.
Right, so if that, if that is.
Higher than the surrounding area.
So I mean, when they reclaim, reclaim that and the rest of the roads reclaimed across that stretch there, that, on your land, that should be pretty much the high area, or also wide open area there.
Yep.
So I mean, as far as you and the neighbors, if our access, I don't think there's any, any real issue with, you know, we, we'll be able to get across there.
I'll clarify that.
Okay, and we'll have it by, we're gonna try and do that by the special meeting? So we, I, we need to put it on the agenda, because we're gonna do it. Okay? So like, we can get it, something going, then, we'll have, we'll, we'll put that on there and we'll, we'll talk about it then, that budget meeting next week. Thanks. Thank you guys, thanks, Todd. Anything else you wanna add?
Thanks, Mark.
What, anything else you need to put?
Um, that I Bailey thing, do we want for that or not? The bill is yet.
The bill's in.
We don't really have a lot left after that, we're good. We have our portfolio, our bills, and I Bailey bill.
Bill, we're, generally speaking, the, uh, that special meeting, so it's July twenty fifth, eight.
Yes.
Eight AM.
And here.
Yes.
Yes.
It'll give me a little time to work on some of that.
I just wanna get some. The bottom, but they do have it listed.
That's, that's different, like, the budget's on there too.
Yeah, I don't know how the budget's going, how, how long of a day does that get to be when we're doing all the departments in one day?
Right now, I have it like eight to two or something, we need everybody's time to get the, make sure everybody's okay with their time. Yesterday, and honestly, I've got it till, from eight AM till noon.
Okay, so we'd be okay.
Like half hour for the county, half hour for the sheriff, and the others, ten minutes.
Can we have a question, we can have a special meeting for multiple topics?
Well, we'll have to. What we're making this special meeting to include this before.
We will put it on there. If we have it on the agenda, we can do that.
Okay.
But we have to.
Or just have a.
Correct, okay.
Or have a second separate meeting.
Right.
Might be better. That might be a better option.
We say it's like twelve o'clock, kind of that meeting.
It really makes a difference, Tommy. I'll say, if we just added it to the agenda.
But then we need to.
As long as it's added to the agenda, the special meeting, you gotta follow the agenda or as a regular scheduled meeting, other things that come up can be discussed.
But we don't want it listed as a special budget hearing then. We should have it just a.
To follow the budget meeting or whatever.
Well, that's a special. To include the budget.
To include the budget.
I'm just saying the verbiage is not correct what we have now.
Well, I think we have to. I know, but here.
Okay. Thanks for everything, guys. Alright.
Clarify date and time. So Steve is saying that we have a three day window.
No, no, actually this is our schedule.
Okay.
And some years we didn't even meet with the department heads and I feel support.
Yes.
So, yeah, you didn't go to the motion.
Yeah, it's just, and it's nice to meet with the department heads so you can question, if you have questions regarding what they're.
I thought.
Okay, so what was the final special meeting that I'm gonna include it on?
To include budget and.
So we can bring back some, we can work on a dollar value and then we'll, you know, we need some clarification for where that road's gonna go.
So I can be, was doing LA, the security for yourself.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. Next one is, uh, I Bailey bill. We gotta, that one, we gotta work on yet too. Portfolio updates and review of the vouchers and we're done. Might be out of here by eleven, huh?
Don't hold your breath.
Huh?
Don't hold your breath.
I'm not gonna, half that bill, half that stack is one bill.
Alright. Starting with, we have thirty-four thousand dollar bill with the I Bailey bill, um, where are we, where are we gonna go with that? I mean, we had a, I, I mean, we did. What's the actual number again, Carmen?
Yeah.
There.
Thirty-four thousand, six eighty-two, seventy-two.
Thirty-four, six eighty-two, seventy-eight?
Seventy-two.
Alright.
And it was being billed, like as of May twenty-eighth, they were still charging fees.
So my question is if there was supposedly a thirty thousand dollar cap on there, can we go back to I Bailey and ask them to honor that thirty thousand dollar cap?
My question is where the thirty thousand dollar cap came from, I guess.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing there. It was just her, that was her proposal and, but, you know, I guess on this is, they're gonna bill whatever time, I think. They're still, honestly, I think they're still getting calls from people here, so, um, they're probably not billing that.
But it was an open-ended contract, like we didn't have a set time.
No, I just.
And we didn't have a set amount, but yet Christie is saying she was told a set amount and told that the contract was ended. I think that's my question as to why.
No, that's not true. Um, from the standpoint, there was no contract being ended and everything. She's just waiting for additional scope of work. Um, and so.
She.
And I, I mean, you can, you can reach out there if you want. She's waiting for an additional scope of work and, uh, there's nothing.
But she was told that, that contract was terminated by the commission.
That's not true. She would, I don't know where you're getting that from. So basically this goes back to that meeting where I proposed hiring a local person and failed to get a second on it, so there was no discussion. But part of that is, um, if you read that Bailey report that was presented at the time, they came up with their recommendation for their forward, so if we could have had discussion on that, we could have stayed with I Bailey and they could keep, but she was waiting for direction. And so after that meeting, she asked, she asked me for direction. There was no termination or nothing. I said, I don't have an additional scope of work for you right now as a go-forward. And at that time, you know, Gene had made it very clear as a chairman, he wanted no more money spent to outside outside, uh, eight, or companies or whatnot, uh, Rick and Jamie had both said that there was counties willing and able to help. And, uh, you know, so we really had just no go-forward. So she's, I'd Bailey will keep working. You just gotta give her a scope of work.
So we're obligated, we need to pay the thirty-four, six eighty-two that we gotta take care of, seventy-two. The other thing is then is like Todd asked about an overall view when we get this tighter in place. So all we have to do then is call if we do want them to quick, take a look over, look, we can have them come back and.
Hundred percent.
So I mean, what do you guys wanna do then? Next thing is, we wanna approve this or?
Well, I think when my, when we initially approved this, it, it wasn't an open-ended dollar amount because we had such a mess that needed to be fixed. I don't think any of us. Mark, I do think you said the number thirty thousand.
No, I, I.
But.
There's no, there's, I did not.
I don't think that there's anything in writing that it was thirty thousand dollar cap, so I feel that we need to pay I Bailey whatever their bill is because they did the services.
I think thirty thousand was just harassment of the two scopes. She's waiting for an additional, she'll wait, she'll work for, but like she told me, she says, I need direction because I can do a time sink and pay money and keep going on this thing and not make any headway with what you guys are looking to actually accomplish. So, you know, it's not just one person from the county that's been calling her here and, you know, part of that with that scope of work is she needs to know direction, what, you know, who can she take direction from, who, who shouldn't she take direction from or whatever?
I guess I would like to know who continue, who is calling and why they're calling.
Two people have, that I know of for sure.
And I understand HR has called because there was issues with the, I believe it was April, which is what they did help with. So that's, I feel, a just call. Carmen, are you still reaching out to her or?
Not at this point. I have not reached out to her since.
I, I think the.
Basically she finished.
I think the, the reach out has been from HR.
Which my understanding was it was for service, like regarding time periods of when they did our services, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean.
Actually, it's been after the billing period and, and so none of that's on there and she's not billing for it yet, so. I, you know, I, I think that bill would be much higher if they actually billed for all the time that they got, they got consulted with.
So their consult is outside of the April pay period?
What do you mean outside?
That, that they've been contacted.
Correct.
It's for like May or something or?
I would say probably June. I don't, I mean, it's been recent.
But they did just bill as of May twenty-eighth.
That is correct.
Okay, so.
But what I'm saying is, is she'll continue to provide consulting work and whatnot, but she just needs a scope of work. And, you know, from her standpoint, as a company, yeah, there's an open, we committed to doing this, but she doesn't wanna continue to bill us without having a goal in, in, in place and all of that and, and cause she said she runs the risk of being a crutch that you're still calling her two or three years from now for this kinda consulting service and.
I don't disagree with that.
And, and so I, you know, personally, I think I Bailey's done phenomenal work, um.
I guess I would.
I just wanna know what the end is, you know, what, what's, what's the end game and?
Well, that's kind of what we were at. It's like about a month ago or whatever it was. It was like you had told us that it was thirty thousand, we'd reached a scope and that we were, uh.
I, I didn't say thirty thousand.
Yeah, you did. That's a, we can go on the record, that's what.
Oh, we can, I.
But that's.
You guys informed me that she, she had told, she had told somebody here that she had.
We're not gonna argue over that. The bottom line is, what do we wanna do to go forward?
A hundred percent, but I never gave her a thirty thousand dollar limit.
Well, I don't know, but that's what you had told us. I'm not saying you told her that. I don't know that.
I, I believe that came from somebody else, that, not from me.
We're not gonna argue.
I would make a motion then to see separations with I Bailey at this current time.
Pay the current?
And pay the current bill.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I feel if we have, if department heads have Carmen, HR, Dawn, whomever has questions in the future, then I think we need to rewrite a scope for I Bailey. But I think our current, what our goal, Carmen, I feel that you feel more competent in payroll.
And I Bailey did it next.
And so I feel that their services at this current time are no longer needed.
So then we'll have somebody relay this opinion to I Bailey also so that they know if someone does call on behalf of the county, they don't have a scope of work to answer any questions or do anything for Mercer County.
Mark, do you wish to do that or Carmen, do you wish?
I'll have that come, I'll, I'll talk to Gene. I'll have that come from Gene. Gene's the one who signed the engagement letters.
Okay. And the other thing is, is that we talked about too, is like with Todd here a couple of weeks ago or whatever it was, that we, uh, you know, if we think that at some point we wanna have a quick overview, see where we're at, once everything's up and running.
Then the five of us can discuss it.
Say, hey, let's go do it.
Totally agree.
Okay.
Can I read the motion? Okay, uh, cease operations with, with I Bailey at this time and pay bill as presented.
And we have a second by Mark. Any other discussion? Seen on Jamie?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Where's Wood Eye also? Motion carried. Okay, we can get that taken care of. Off the plate. Portfolio updates. Go ahead, Casey.
I haven't had any meetings in July yet. P and Z was canceled and we haven't had a water board meeting. So did tend the county fair. I thought the Saturday evening was a good crowd, uh, good entertainment. I'd like to thank Rick Bowman for putting on the fair or helping put on the fair. I guess it's a team effort. Yep. But good job. Glad you keep doing that. I think it's something good for the public and hopefully we can continue with that going forward.
Well, we'll next, I guess, talk about the fair a little bit. I mean, it's like, we don't have the final numbers, but we didn't have a very good night on Friday night. Uh, Thursday was okay. The carnival did not turn out like we had anticipated. What they have said, what was some conversations held with them going forward. I mean, we're not gonna, we didn't meet our total expectations as far as finances with, um, especially with the livestock end of it. Uh, I mean, they did well, but we, that's what we have left. Um, I don't know what that bill's gonna look like yet, but we're working on that. Um, I did talk with, uh, Meta on this, uh, out of state travel thing that'll be coming up again, um. Sheriff's Department, we're looking at, just for anybody's information, we were, uh, looking at moving Jamie's office to the, um, in the sheriff's department and Jim's out on swapping offices. Road Department, uh, we're finally getting going on, um, Secocuia Estates, they, they were getting rolling on that. Um, I did have, uh, Trotters fly that pile with a drone so we have, you know, to protect our interests and what's there. I don't have those numbers yet. They didn't get them back, so we, at least we know if we're trading gravel for, for millings that are off that old pile, we know what, we're getting a fair deal. But those numbers aren't, I don't have them, so, but they do have, they're in the system, so we're, they're not lost. Um. I guess that's what I have, fair extension. And the only other thing I wanna add is like, I'd like to meet with Terry and, you know, after the meeting today, if you, if we got a few minutes, so.
Yes.
Other than that, that's, uh, I'll have more going forward with the fair, but it's a work in progress. We did, you know, we did get, uh, that grant money, we, we did get forty-five thousand. Uh, with only a match of thirty-three percent. Um, not sure yet if that thirty-three percent is half of that still in, in, uh, in, you know, in.
Process.
You know, the in-kind thing?
Yeah.
So I mean, if we, county has to match, if we got that, then it would only be like seventy-five hundred bucks, so. I mean, where we could have it matched with labor. Yeah, with the in-kind, so I mean, that, looking at that, our outside dollars aren't gonna be nearly as what we had tened earlier, so. But we didn't get as much money as we had hoped for either, but we'll just work with that scope on what we can to, you know, improve the fair ground. You know, that's what, what that was intended for. So Mark, you're next.
Um, I honestly, I don't have a lot, but I was just gonna, you know, uh, it was budget season. I believe the library board came to the last meeting and presented, presented the budget.
Thing, I've got two people, they're putting applications in to war, so next August, then we'll have people to work on.
Good. Um, you know, budget wise, uh, both them and the Mercer County ambulance, um, or have done a good, good job. Um, the only other thing I'd like to add is I've gotten asked by a couple of residents, I believe, um, Keith Kessler in particular, I think he's a resident on, down, on the county line down there.
Yeah, he's in, he's on, yeah, on the east side, but yeah, he's Mercer County.
Okay, he's asked me a couple of times and, uh, for updates on our ordinance rewrite and, uh, I've asked Todd and Todd's got, given me updates, but it sounds like that's still in process and there's really nothing to, there's really nothing for us to even look at yet, so.
I'll add a little bit to that. Keith did send me a text. I sent it to, uh, Jen and I asked her, in the July meeting, there was nothing. He asked for the next P and Z meeting, so we had none. And he voiced his concerns with setbacks and, you know, us adopting, um, McLean as, as a whole. I said that in my, my opinion, we did adopt it as a whole. We were looking at it. And I said, I'd give those concerns to Jen and she emailed them to the law office to, uh, you know, incorporate even what they're looking at, our setbacks and the definition of residence was his, uh, concern. So I, that did get from us to her, back to the law office.
Okay. So I guess in the future then to add to that, when we have public concerns, um, what we are to tell them at this point is that when the rewrite is drafted, then we have to go through a public hearing process.
I believe there'd be two of them.
Proper time for them to make their public comments.
Casey, I, I believe it, they'll have to go through two public readings, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So that would be their time to make their comments.
You done?
I'm done.
I have nothing. I got a social services meeting tomorrow. Um, obviously our boardroom is put back together, but Arrow is coming back because we have a horrid smell in the room next door and so we don't know if there's a rodent or if there's water damage that's unforeseen. So Arrow is.
They did a good job putting this one back, just back together.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so, um, Arrow is gonna come check out the smell next door, so, um, otherwise I think that's it. It's been pretty kind of a quiet month.
Okay. Next step is remove, review, improve the voucher. You're heading on?
No.
You got time?
Yep.
Thanks for everybody for coming.
Casey, did you wanna look at him first if you have to go?
I still gotta be here to vote, so it don't matter with him first or last.
No, I wonder, hey, Rick, you got your stamp today?
What?
You got yours now?
I don't have a stamp.
But, thank you. Some of the other treasurers had talked about. Rick has a, that is why, that is where we started with that is reasons like this.
I'm just convinced.
Did you guys know when I was driving, when I went to Philadelphia or why I was going, this state printed this press release, I used to kind of tell what I learned while I was out there.
So I mean, really, this or that too, it's like, you know, I think we have.
And I kind of wanted to see if I knew that Warren Paul, she has actually asked for her agenda, but our agenda didn't come out until this year. It was like really before it came out, so.
But anyways, you know, but I mean, we would have been able to say, you didn't have it, you didn't have it pending or whatever, so, but we see that.
It should have never been.
We dropped it where it was. It got dropped up here, not here.
And he's coming down.
Casey. This one here.
Yes.
I'm well versed in, in this kinda stuff, so. Can you have them re-invoices and do it as lump sum? Because the way it's, the way it's presented right now, you do have to pay tax. But if he lump sums it, he just gives you a bill for four sixty-seven eighty, he calls it later, to rebuild or to repair radiator. There is no sales tax. And so I'm just, um. It's either one or the other. Either you pay the fifty-five cents as it's presented here or.
I mean, that's what I talked to Carmen about too. I said, I, I looked at all.
We just look at it.
Say that again.
You know, about putting some of the jail funds into the special vehicle.
As long as we're not gonna pay a late fee for not being done in the past.
But we need to have the same numbers that.
Yeah, yeah, and what we're trying to do is avoid getting the, the rest of the company in a, in a fine enough to three percent cap.
Oh, well. Well, no, no, more revenue is going into the general fund. They are part of the general fund. Cause you are, the sheriff is the general fund. So that, we can get a lot of that, but when you put it in the rotating bucket, it stays there and yes.
And then we don't have to mail for it.
Exactly.
That's how I look at it. You know, that way we can save a little.
A lump sum billing for a builder.
But if you break.
Those funds you bring in help pay for your expenses.
And the supplies, the materials of it are sales taxes.
Saving the money, you know, county money. It's not, I mean, it's on, it is what it is. It's there.
Kind of a wash, but the only.
But I still think that revolving fund is important to keep for that.
So if that's case, we're doing it percent initially, we need to do it for this.
That was, my, my question was anything, I'm looking at the upside of that. So that's why I called you to say, you know, the downside of it, you know, so I'm, Casey.
Yeah, I think it's good to put money aside for the expense we're gonna have. Same with that.
Oh, it doesn't matter.
It can't be sucked into the general fund.
We, Rick, we did all two.
We did pay two of them. Well, now we're adding stuff or we just do this?
No, um, that's, Casey, that's just informational from Dawn. That's not a bill that was.
Yeah, Dawn just, for her trip, she went there.
No, I was just wondering where the rest of my papers went. For sure. Now you still have stuff, dude. You didn't have my papers at home?
No, did I? Don't.
All right, now we're. God, what are you, run your furnace off with a paperwork or what?
That's a good idea.
Actually, a good idea.
Like, I know I have my chip, but my notes.
I put it on the wrong one, sorry.
And anything related to that.
That's gotta be looked at. Yeah, two of them before fall.
What's that?
G D A bill was, uh, Rick, James said that.
Huh?
James said you had all that kind of itemized.
You have the amounts of all the rents for all the rentals we paid?
I, yeah, I had some of that. I don't have it with me right now.
But for the budget meeting, we probably shouldn't.
Well, it looks like what it's gonna be for, and then I did get an email from J two. I didn't respond to him yet. I forgot. I was gonna have it today. But, uh, lead into a, a, that scope of what it's gonna look like, so I can get, bring that to us. I did give Carmen a little bit on that too, and it was, uh, the borrowing money, we maybe have an opportunity to purchase it rather than borrowing it, the version. We might have, please to do that.
Okay.
So that's another discussion. But, uh, I don't know, with lack of a better word, cause I don't, the architect or the engineer or whatever.
Architect, yeah.
Came back?
Yeah, he just sent it through yesterday. I was gonna, I was gonna email it, email it back and I got moving up.
Didn't, uh, Gene leak the auto pin?
No. He could have left me his, but it probably wouldn't have worked. So promptly, she's gonna be able to hot off the fixer next time.
The auto pin.
The auto pin isn't working here, though. Here's the one that they were talking about. Been sticking this stuff into this one. No, I should have rebuilt it and, and built the parts that you can't. It's about thirty-five thousand, but.
I did, was it like a two B ring or the next, first part of next?
Yes, I just.
Cause it would be. I really didn't want to buy one of these. Well, that's the database that was.
And you can have two.
Yeah. You can, but you can't have a movie there. When we go.
On the five man board.
If we go, if you and like Gene and I were, we're on the board, on the portfolio together, we can't go down and, we have to get it. Because then we're breaking open, because we are now a subcommittee and we're forming.
Subcommittee, I forgot about that.
That's why we changed it back.
Yeah.
Cause we, I mean, we were, we were, we were doing it wrong accordingly and found out about it, so we changed it.
Yep. I just kept thinking, well, it's not a quarter, it's two out of five. It's a subcommittee.
Pen's gonna wear out.
Rick's gonna get a callus on his. Raider's callus, whatever they call it.
Well, at least in the.
If you run out of ink, Carolyn's got lots of payments.
They had, showed me where to even sign the first few times.
Was it? Okay. The other one was actually purchasing of the thing, right? This is actually the fee where we collect it from or whatever. Is that program kinda in your wheelhouse? You don't have to.
We got more of that stuff too, because I think it's still, still do have a crack or something as cheap as, as high as anything. Something you need to look into it, but. You got a little fish to fry first.
I don't know if we can hardly do it for five hundred bucks.
Then you have all, all of that stuff. And then he's got, we, we have.
And then the way I always look at, cause I use stuff like that personally too, the way I always look at, I got another employee that comes with the truck.
Right.
You know, so.
Yeah, you know, you have to look at, my biggest thing was is that you have to look at.
You pay our employee and you pay the fuel, how much do they have for maintenance left on the truck? Well, one tire, you lose one bomb.
So my, my question, when, when you look at it like that, is like, we need to go at least to see the, see how much you. You have to have something compared.
The only time that I've run into personal problems with that is in the scheduling, you know?
Right.
If you use out of state doing something else, then you don't have access to that.
Totally sign this one.
Casey, you're on, I'm sorry, you can't, you can't get much for five hundred dollars when it comes to labor and equipment anymore?
Yep. It's a different one.
So how close are we getting to the fifty thousand dollar budget on these? Cause this is a hard number, right? Like this is get, give us numbers.
This is a different.
Oh, whole different. Never mind. Casey did, to answer that question, I'm pretty sure that we approved that with a cost not to exceed, so it can't go over fifty.
I did, but they're looking.
Yeah, but they bitted at like forty-nine nine hundred, so we can't go over the four, they can't go over the forty-nine hundred.
Correct.
They came back, go, remember correctly, is they come back seeing that we were, that scope was gonna look bigger than that. If to, but we would have to, I think we need to approve some of that.
Yep.
We would have to, uh, I think we have to approve it to make, I don't know, we, we talked about it, but I don't know if we approved it. Is that correct?
That's why I think, thought. I thought we're.
What was it?
I, I know we approved it, there, we accepted their proposal with a cost not to exceed.
But they have, the one, the rewrite for the.
Oh, the ordinance.
Yeah.
When we got to that, they said that, when she came back, didn't she say that it was gonna look bigger than what it was planned? Question that, you know.
When she presented that day, you just giving us an update?
Yeah. But I don't know if we approved moving forward with anything bigger than that.
No, and I don't think, I don't think we got shown any of the dollars either. I don't think we got shown any of the.
We didn't see, we didn't see the. It, we didn't see the three, one above that.
Yeah.
I'm moved to approve withholding the two we need to tell. Okay, whatever you guys told me.
Uh, there's motors and center machine.
There was two invoices that had incorrect tax on it.
Okay, he's in motors and central machine, okay.
They taxed us a little.
Well, they taxed, I mean, whomever crossed off the tax amounts, we just kinda wanna correct it into.
It's both, they're both like repairs and rebuilds, so if you split it out and have labor and parts separate, then the, the parts are taxable under North Corwin. Cool. But.
Some things we do see actually.
What I'm saying is, is it should be a lump sum because it's a repair. Should be just a lump line, not subject to any tax. Certain, yeah, you're right.
But there are some taxes that we still can pay too, though. All that too.
He's crazy. Money is spent on cellular servers, you know, just think of. It's gotta be a racket that they make a lot of money off of. Actually, that's why W R T, easy call-up cash, cause they wanna look tough.
Oh, to separate it out, yes. Yes, it is.
In our day, everyone was signing, it always said, oh, I put D C on it. When we were young, they didn't wanna put D C on it. Vietnamese.
Oh.
To give, yep.
I didn't know if that was acceptable, honestly. First, first one I've seen like that.
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about.
They never change.
Not many people, you know, the younger generation remember that.
It's a great, a lot of them, but for a different day.
Oh, it's seventy-seven, oh, yeah.
Unfortunately, there's still a lot of, a lot of victims that, uh.
Lived through that.
Lived through it, brings back a lot of tumultuous memories, you know?
Well, I know a few of these guys, those guys do. Oh, you know, the list of reading lunch stuff too. Yeah, probably do it.
Less, less of them.
Yeah, no. Jamie made one motion.
Oh, second, Rick.
I asked one over there to sign over there, right?
Yes, you did.
They were, something like that.
Uh, paid them. And then, uh, per veyron bill.
And I'll provide.
Last million. You would prevent, you would, if you were.
I'm saying, provide as I own, yeah.
So, yeah, so.
I just, I didn't see, I was talking, I didn't just talk to the.
Yeah. Big girl, right? Was it, was it same or same? About her? Okay.
I have, but I picked a different.
She might be different.
Yeah.
Bet she's not.
No, I didn't.
It's only a phone.
No, it was good, there was a concert, actually Wednesday was so hot, a storm had rolled through, to the south, to a really, it was gorgeous, I think, at home. Thursday was hot.
What night did that, did I get a little headline on it, right?
Um, no, they wanted the second one, third, second one, that was.
It's kinda cool, are they cool?
Kind of, they were Thursday.
It's kinda cool.
Friday night, I think was, uh.
I, I guess it was, they started on Wednesday versus Thursday, so maybe it's.
But you don't have to go every day.
But I did, and I enjoyed it.
Casey, you didn't go every day?
Haven't been there yet.
Oh, what?
Somehow it falls in the middle of heating season.
Well, you see.
I haven't been there either, Jamie almost, well, she almost, she was going, but she almost didn't have her other, when it rained.
Yeah, I don't, I just made them a night. I had the barley cut down, I don't know, I was complaining about my winter was being crooked, so.
Is there a reason for it?
No.
It's crazy.
Other than I'm blind and I can't see.
It's crazy how that thing is growing, I mean, it's kinda replaced, we fast, don't we fast?
Correct, yes.
You don't even hear about it, like, we fast is a little D L anymore.
People are going, don't hear it.
He did join her, you, three of the nights.
But the cost has gone up immensely, huh? Oh, small.
But really, you know, I was, we, we were talking about that, but I'm like, we're going to a different concert in Biscay in November, what I paid for that one concert, I'm paying just a little bit more, and I got a lot of.
A little bit more? What were you driving back and forth?
We did, we did, after drive.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause the camping is more expensive than concerts.
Yes.
And I'm guessing, a lot of those people at camp, I mean, they're making it like a, it's like, it's a big education type deal. They wanna drink and drive either.
Well, that's just it, you pay for a camping spot versus, we just, they rented it there and.
Cheaper to buy a camping spot, rent a camping spot than it is to pay a higher insurance and, uh, and a rent.
But to me, it's just been so hot the last couple of years, it's, oh.
Correct, yes.
I can't imagine how hot it gets when there's a couple thousand people swarming around.
And then this year with that six up, six inches of rain or whatever, it's been not as hot, it's humid.
Only Thursday night was it a little unbearable for a little while, but sun starts setting and it wasn't bad, cause Wednesday, they had a storm roll through to the south, so it really cooled off and. Saturday, Friday, Saturday was a little warm, but it actually wasn't terrible.
Saturday was complicated by the fact that you could chew the air out of Canada.
Yes.
That was, that was pretty bad.
Are they talking rain next week, you said again?
Just Mondays through Thursday, or Sunday night technically.
It's Thursday.
Right, just the whole week.
Well, not Friday.
Which will probably be the only day that I actually.
Well, I don't have any, my hay machine broke, so I don't have any, have a ground, so.
I got, I got bolts and grass on, you know.
Man, there's, there's a lot of small greens that are turning back.
Well, it's, it's the end of July.
July, but you're, you're gonna see some of that stuff probably getting cut in a couple of weeks, huh?
Well, yeah, but, but three weeks.
We're already on the field, they're, they're, at a decent time.
Winter wheat, I think, would be any day.
You're probably gonna wait, like, the spring wheat's gonna be about, cause they'll let it get riper, you get, but, uh, cause nobody swabs it anymore.
See, from the rain the other night, our wheat was fine, but the neighbors, that was really bad.
You gotta let it go low between the end.
To the, to the grain and cut it.
My barley was lodged pretty bad, I suppose you noticed that. Cut really good going one way, it cut like.
Yeah, we, we, we're cutting the prey. Were you, you're real, you wanna pick it up?
Well, it was losing to the south, so when I would cut south, it laid down, I thought it wasn't too bad, but now after it's been a couple of days, it starts.
Well, since we had all that rain, I found some wet spots in the barley field, so I, my husband said, how mad would you be if I got this quick stuff?
You didn't, you didn't wanna. Man, I have to drive all the way back and just keep going north? Yeah, well, there's some, that one year, when did it snow, like, pretty early and then? God, maybe, maybe ten years ago now.
Sixteen, we had snow early in October, cause I had, like.
Did you just say sixty-six?
I can't speak to that date. My mom can barely speak to that.
I was minus.
I didn't remember it, but I have heard lots of stories.
I was minus twelve.
Sixty-three wasn't much better.
You were minus twenty-four.
Sixty-three wasn't much better.
Well, sixty-three, that was in spring, March, twenty, that's big. Big, uh. I just remembered Washington, who, uh, who, uh, didn't have, you didn't see any dumps or side dumps, so, I mean, he had like farm trucks, was a cattle accident, they didn't have any frozen cattle, they just dumped them in, they were hauling, they hauled a big load of them in there.
Well, what else would you haul cattle in?
Not like that.
There were a lot less trouble loading.
No, no end, no.
Lot less trouble loading that way.
No, no end gate in it.
He said they were, he said they were dead. Yeah, they used to pee and render them, but now, can't even do that.
It is, it's for notary stamp, it's for dispatchers.
I did call her.
I see, running, getting stuff done.
Jamie, they had, uh, I asked her, Secapulia Estates was, um, cleaning that, they were cleaning the mud out of it, they were vacuum trucking it, you know? That, um, watered mud, and I asked her yesterday if they could take it, and she said, yes.
Oh.
They took the dirt, it was just dirt and water.
You know, I think I said.
It's like plum cabbie or.
Huh? They're looking for, you know, the, um, Secapulia Estates move, they dug a hole, you know, and they're looking for utilities, they just take a pressure washer and wash it out, then they're vacuuming that stuff out. They, the truck got full before they were completed, and they were looking for a place to dump it, so I called her and asked her if we could dump it there, and she said, yes.
Well, it really shouldn't have been anything. Well, I was, we were hauling pants and long sleeves, and Jean's getting some.
How's it going, I mean, how's it going for you?
Okay, so.
Tyler, I mean, how's it, how's it going?
I, I think it's going good, on my side.
Feeling a little more better, comfortable, things are.
Oh, absolutely, yes, absolutely. The monthly.
If we get on those electronic, uh, time cards, that would make it even better.
Now that, yeah, that's another step up.
Oh, there's two, what the heck?
West Plains, that's, uh, that annual or is that quarterly, West Plains, uh?
Um, okay, so is that fifteen thousand?
No, this.
No, no, not one or two.
Just a forty.
That is a quarterly.
That's the old customer.
It is, that's her monthly, the nursing, yes.
Monthly hours.
Yeah.
Monthly hours.
Mileage, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, same, you know, I seen it.
Yeah, Western Plains is, was a custom.
Cowboys out there. Five goggles or what?
Yeah, yeah, I think they were prescription glasses, we're lucky that's all that happened.
I don't know, can we pay him, is he not here?
No, actually, he put that in last, the last meeting.
Those were for hours, he didn't get it in.
Times he did work.
I'm sure if he's worth fifty-four dollars.
Just have to do the backwards.
Yeah.
Any discussion? I got my paper back. Are you good?
Yep.
No discussion, oh, Jamie?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
All over the eye. Saying another bit, motion, uh, me.
Oh, I just, sorry. You bet. Eight o'clock for the twenty-fifth? Eight o'clock for the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
I'll go sign that stuff, uh. Jamie, I'll go sign that, and then I'll.
I'll be over there.